I would like to call the Board of Selectmen meeting to order for Tuesday, October 19th at 6:04 PM. Could I have a roll call, please?
Joe Shank, present.
Chad Sexton-Duranian, present.
Veronica Kell, present. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegations. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I'd like to announce that the meeting is being recorded. It's also live on Channel 9 and it will be posted on YouTube after the fact. Chairman's additions and deletions. I would like to add to Section 3.4, the Animal Inspector nominations. To Section 5.3, an announcement of Halloween. When trick or treating will be this year. I would like to delete 4.6, the mandatory referral comment for five turnpike roads, because the hearing for that was last night. So I sent the, I took care of the mandatory referral and everybody should have that. And that is all I have as far as additions or deletions go. Ross, do you have anything?
Oh, you're not.
Joe, do you have anything?
I don't.
Okay. Public comment period. Is there anybody that would like to make a comment?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Laura?
Thank you. I just want to thank you all for, on behalf of the citizens of this town, for your tireless hours that you're donating to our community. It's much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. Nice to be here. Any others? All right, we're going to move on to 1.6, review and approve the minute, meeting minutes for 8:31, 9:21, 6:09. And we're going to eliminate 7:26 because I don't have those quite ready yet. But I did go through last night. I have eight meetings from the summer that need to be done, the Monday, Wednesday, Friday type meetings. There are, all the 6 PMs for the summer need to be done. And that will take care of the summer. So there's still more to go.
Okay.
8:31 and 9:21. I guess I'd like to have a general discussion of how we're going to be approving minutes going forward. I'm wondering if it might be better to, for each of us to take these early on and send comments to Carolyn. And then, so we might need a second space in the, you know, not quite ready for prime time folder. So I think maybe if we could move minutes that have not yet been approved into that, you know, if, when Carolyn writes them, or I write them as the case may be, put them in the not yet ready for prime time. That means any of us can review it. And let whoever the writer of the minutes is know any changes. And then they can incorporate them.
You want to add a folder to the SharePoint file? I can put it working minutes in that same slot?
That'll work.
Does that work?
And then we can edit them, maybe not for content. Ross, maybe you can help advise on this. You know, for formatting or things of that nature.
I think if one of you finds either typos, you ought to just point them out. If there's a statement that you think is wrong, mark down, I disagree with this. Or this is what I think it should say. Carolyn can then try to either merge them together, because everybody says the same thing, or bring in.
The differences.
But if she has a chance to hear your comments before, she can, has a better chance to bring in perfected minutes that are ready for approval.
100% agree with that.
Okay, then I guess what I'd like to do is make a motion to put 8:31 and 9:21 into the working minutes folder. And so is there a motion to do that? And then we'll bring them back for November 7th.
And who's, Mr. Shank want to say something?
No. I mean, yeah, I mean, I just got all these printed out here and I do, just sent to me. So, yeah, I think we have to look at them a little bit different. And, you know, be a little more organized when we approve them, I guess.
Okay, so is there a motion, or we even need a motion? All right, so 8:31 and 9:21 will be moved into the working minutes.
And who's going to create that folder?
Chaz.
Thank you.
I hope you will, Chaz. Thank you. 6:09, 2021, did you all have a, I mean, I just finished those yesterday, so.
I looked at them.
So feel free to make any comments or hand me any and I'll update them.
So are we doing the same thing with this one?
Well, I'm willing to let you go ahead and say whatever you want to say. We can update it with amendments.
Well, the only thing is just take out the italics and I'm good.
Okay, so you want no italics. You know, what we need is some sort of, you know, elements of style for minutes is where we're heading here.
We have a new style coming to you, so I don't know if you'll see.
Is it the Sterling one?
Yes.
I like that one.
Okay, well, that's.
It's so much easier to read, I think, than this.
Very confusing to read, the way they're typed out and the way they are. So let's just, let's put all in there and then get them all put in the new program.
Okay.
Make it easy.
If you can approve the ones already, it's the same format you've been using. At least we can move on on these.
Okay, so for, let's do 6:09 then, just to, can't get those summer ones moving along. So 6:09 is italics?
Yeah.
Removed? All right, Joe, do you have any comments on the ones from 6:09? I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
Good, I'm fine, thank you.
You're good, all right. So is there a motion to accept 6:09 minutes?
I move that we accept the June 9th, 2021 meeting minutes.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Joe Shank, yes.
Chad Sexton-Duranian, yes.
Veronica Kell, yes. All right, thank you very much. Now, this moves us to 2.1, the annual review with TCAM. The bylaws, the agreement with the town, the financials, and the policies. So I guess Dave and Lisa and Steve is here remotely, so welcome. And if you'd like to come up to the table, can you do that? Go over this with us?
If you want. Steve, Steve, you're going to take care of the. Yeah, so I'll just start and I might have to, just because everybody knows where I'm at, might have to pop off from the doctor comes in. But I just want to say that I want to introduce Elizabeth Reinhardt. She's our attorney. She is on the call, I believe I saw her.
I am, thank you.
Yes.
You're very welcome. So, Madam Chair, fellow selectmen, Board of Selectmen, you know, I just like to say that I'm proud of where we've come in a very short time, just to kind of start out. You know, as everybody knows, when we took over in January, we needed to put a lot of processes in place. And we have done that. We have a great legal team, a great accounting team, a bookkeeper. We have now filed with the state. We've put our policies in place. We've updated our bylaws. And so we're into the point now where we're starting to see some content onto the local channel, which I think you've all seen through, with Dave doing the band concert, doing the wall that came into town. I know he did the rail trail. And I just really want to take this opportunity to thank, you know, Lisa, who has done just an outstanding job scheduling all the board meetings through the.
Looks better.
Through.
Get out of here.
Okay, so I'm going to have to pop off right now because the doctor isn't here. But Dave, you want to take over?
Good luck.
Sorry.
Good luck, Steve.
All right, so.
Okay, I'll try and pick up where. They didn't hear me through the end.
All right.
I'll try and pick up where Steve left off. Like you said, we've come a long way. We've got a lot of work done in a short amount of time. We rely heavily on our attorney, Liz Reinhardt, who would like to speak to the board briefly and say a few things and explain anything, get any questions you might have for her. Liz, you want to go ahead?
Thank you, Dave, and good evening, Madam Chairperson and Board members. It's a pleasure to be with you. As Dave mentioned, I'm Attorney Liz Reinhardt. My law practice is in Concord. Our practice is exclusively with organizations working in the nonprofit sector. And we're very pleased to be working with TCAM and to be before you this evening, having submitted to you for review, I think, a pretty comprehensive set of materials that reflect the hard work that this board has done over the last many months in conformance with the grant agreement between the town and TCAM, as well as its own obligations as a Massachusetts nonprofit charitable corporation, anticipating recognition as a 501(c)(3) organization. The materials include a full annual report, which has financial information for fiscal year ended 2020, an activities report that gives you in detail the information about the studio and how it's been built out and the programming and effect at the moment, as well as future financial numbers. And the board and I are happy to answer questions you may have about that in your report submission. What brings us before you this evening, in addition to that, are three requests for approval from the board, which track the agreement between the town and TCAM. So the agreement, which was dated September 6th, 2020, has, as I know you know, reciprocal obligations between TCAM and the town. And in addition to the annual reporting cycle, which we're beginning this evening with you, also, there is the funding process after town meeting allocation by which TCAM comes to the board to request a drawdown of funding. There is in the, and Dave or Steve can talk with you about that, but that's one of the items we'd like you to move on this evening. A second item is the agreement as originally drafted, provided that TCAM would apply to the IRS for 501(c)(3) status in September 2020. As you know, there was a change in leadership. We were retained and we've been working with the board to update corporate documents, which get keyed up to be filed with the IRS for their inspection and recognition as a C3 organization. We're ready to take that next step after the board's actions. And we'll ask you to amend the agreement to permit us to file that application with the IRS on or before December 31st of this year. And then the third item we're bringing before you this evening is a request for approval of amendments to the original TCAM Articles of Organization, which created the corporation, and bylaws, which are the internal rules of procedure. Once we started working with the board, we realized that there were amendments which were necessary to those underlying documents, again, to queue them up for the IRS review and granting exemption as a 501(c)(3) organization. So that's a preview of what brings us before you this evening. And we can take this in whatever order you'd like to proceed.
And I am back for, as much as I, but I am back on.
All right, Steve. I guess for me, I was on the Board of Selectmen when this organization was originally, well, not originally, I stepped in after they had already filed with the Secretary of State. That's when I came on board. So what was left was the grant agreement. And we were told, we, the Board of Selectmen, were told that we had no input into the Articles of Organization and bylaws. Since then, the grant agreement was made. And I believe we do have to agree to any changes. So I don't need a preview of the originating. You provided us with all the original documents. So I don't need that preview. So I think, but I would want to start there with Chaz or Joe. Do you have any questions on the original documents?
I don't, because I was very avid in looking at what was presented on all of the OS meetings for the previous several years. So I was very well aware of that.
What about you, Joe? Do you?
Listening in from prior down.
Don't say every other word.
I said, I was, you know, on prior listening, so I followed this quite well. I was just a little confused as to, you know, all the money and all that that went around. Now I know Steve and Dave and Lisa have done a tremendous job checking this. I've read this. I'm not a lawyer, so I don't know how to really dissect it. But I have all the confidence in the world that the attorneys that are working with, Dave, Steve, and Lisa, have done it right to protect that community. So whatever we need to do to move forward, that's what we need to do.
Okay, then for me, I think where I would, then we're not going to look at the original documents.
I don't think we need to.
Okay, so where I would like to go then is the filings to the state and local government. And I'm trying to, this might be. I'm trying to see which of these.
Where are you going, the articles or the minutes?
It's the one that starts Certificate of Change of Directors. It has the 990 up through December.
And the AGO Registration Confirmation.
Yeah, that's what I'm looking for here, is that Report Part 3?
It is.
It is, it's Report Part 3. So I'm starting at the end, I guess. It's the file that's called TCAM Report Part 3. So I guess that's where I want to start. You guys good with that? With the Certificate of Change of Officers, just to review. All right, so you see that we have three officers and their positions. All right, the next one is the AGO Registration Confirmation. This is from October 13th, 2021. This gives you the number that you would use to file the Form PC. Is that correct? Are you, are you required to file Form PC, Liz?
Yes.
Office.
TCAM is a public charity in Massachusetts.
Okay. The Request for Quarterly Funding for Towns and Community Access Media. All right, is this the one that you're putting forward that was written to Ross?
I don't think there's a number now.
No, in the public there's an amount.
Well, there's a follow-up of the amount.
Okay.
We just can't get to Ronnie.
The 990, is there anything in there that you feel we should note, Liz? I guess the question is to you. I don't know who filled out the 990. Let me look at the last page, Karen Spadelli?
The nine.
Steve, you're coming out, you know, wrong, wrong, wrong. That day.
Would it help for me to explain the 990 and the role of it?
I understand it, I don't know about Chaz and Joe.
I'm very well aware of this.
Okay, so Chaz is good, Joe, are you good with it? Yes. Okay. So the fiscal year is through December 31st, correct? So, and this was filed for 2020. So you have another 990 that's going to be filed after the end of December? And you have how many months? The four months? Yeah, so mid, what would it be, mid-April or mid-May?
May 15th, although extensions are readily permitted. I, this is a matter for the accountants, I'm not anticipating an extension, but just for you to know that there is an automatic extension granted under the 990 filing rules.
Right. So as far as, just for my information, the quarterly amounts or the quarterly draw, is it, when exactly are those?
When? Well, that's something that we need to discuss. I was just going to go through this and let's see.
And then, okay.
Before we get to that.
Sure. Right, no, I understand that, but it's like, I want to know how it fits into your fiscal year.
Okay. I didn't see a Form PC here, but I assume we can get that online, correct?
There is a Form PC in the package. It may be in another section, but it is enclosed. Under the periodic report index.
Yeah, it was, yeah.
First document.
Did I miss something?
The section which has the actual annual report.
What's the file name?
Oh, it is also filed online, but we've submitted it with the report.
Okay. All right, so I guess at this point, so much paper here.
We apologize for the amount, but that's what we've been dealing with and why it's taken us so long to get rid of that.
Okay, so I don't see a need to go through all the conflict of interest policy, all of that. Is there any need?
No.
Chaz or Joe?
No, I don't. No, I just want to echo what, what has been said by Steve, is that you guys have done a great job and I appreciate it. One of the, this has been one of my personal point of attention, because I feel that public access is very important for any municipality, number one. Number two is we need to provide this public access for the individuals of the town, which means that any individual in town is able to put forth ideas so that we can get it out there in front of them. And that's the whole purpose behind it. We've needed organization, we've needed direction and leadership. And I want to appreciate, I appreciate all of your work, including you, Liz, not leaving you out. This is very important for us to take the next steps. It's very evident with what we see on YouTube. And that's only the start, like you said, Dave. And I am behind what you guys are doing 100%. And, you know, the work that I've been doing in the background with you in regards to some of the technical stuff, you know, so I have no other questions in regards to what we have here.
All right, then let's move on to the votes that we need to take. Does that work?
Yeah, it does.
Yeah.
Are you guys good with that? All right. So for the Board of Selectmen's approval, the letter requesting the quarterly funding per the grant agreement dated September 15th, 2020, and in the SharePoint, which thing is this? TCAM items for the Board of Selectmen's approval. All right, so the first one is the letter requesting the quarterly funding. Is this a different letter that you just gave?
No, that should, that's just the part of what's on the front of your page.
Okay.
It's just pretty hesitant.
Do you have a dollar figure, just so I can put it in the motion? A dollar figure?
Yes, it should be on that one we sent, gave you prior just now. 195.
462.
10 cents. I don't see that on. In the letter? I think it's a long letter.
October 13th does not have a dollar on it.
Okay. That's what I'm looking at.
I'm sorry, the short answer to that would be is the amount that was appropriated at town meeting, which, like Lisa just said, was $195,462.10. We haven't drawn quarterly on that amount since that was appropriated, so.
So you would like a check prior to November 10th, which is roughly 30 days from when you sent the notice, for a quarter of that, 25% of that number?
Yeah, for all of it. Yeah, we, there's been some side discussions and Ronnie alluded to it about, or Chaz did, about what is quarterly? Can we, can we ask for the money on a quarterly basis? But what amount can we ask for quarterly? The whole thing, $1, a quarter? I don't, the language in the agreement is vague enough that we are not sure exactly what. So being who we are, we decided to ask for the whole nine yards and.
Because even if we go forward from here and taking quarterly payments, that 195 that we haven't touched is going to sit there, except for the quarterly payment. We went through, okay, so the bylaw, or the bylaw, the agreement reads, and this is Section 8, number 2, the payments to TCAM from the Board of Selectmen specified in paragraph 1 above. Paragraph 1 above just explains that the town gets 5% of Comcast's gross annual revenues quarterly shall be made on a quarterly basis within 30 days of the Board of Selectmen's receiving a written request from TCAM for such funding and subject to the funds being received by the town from the cable licensee and send funds being available in accordance with this agreement and applicable law. This makes you think that as it comes in, in one year, in one quarter, that the next month, they could request it and get it. But that is not the way it works. By law, so all of FY21, those quarterly payments were saved up in a PEG access account. We at town meeting, you can't give them money that hasn't been appropriated. So what we did at town meeting was appropriate everything that was in that PEG access account. And that was the $195,422.10. FY22 funds are now accumulating them. TCAM doesn't have access to those funds until we appropriate it at town meet, annual town meeting in May. So the funds that they're getting, they're receiving are the funds from FY21.
And the funds that we approved in town meeting in the spring.
Were the ones that were available as of May. You know, the quarterly that came in at the end of March. And then there was another 21K or so in that account. And I think that's because there was a delay with Hartley getting transferred to TCAM in July, August, September. He wound up longer with the town than what he had been. So the town held some of that quarter, or whatever quarter it was, June, I guess, June of 2020. They held that, didn't transfer it in the transfer at town meeting, held it to help pay for Hartley. And then there was more money sitting there. The town gets between 40 and 45K roughly per quarter from Comcast. It's based on, all of us that have Comcast, 5% of whatever we paid to Comcast comes back to the town for community access media purposes.
Right.
Okay, so, so right now they have it. So this, it took me a long time to understand this. So this, it took me a long time to understand this because I found it very confusing in their Board of Selectmen meetings last winter and spring where I'm saying, well, wait, how does this work? They should be getting them because it made no sense to me, because when you have something that says you get it on a quarterly basis, there is nothing in here. They can't get the monies that are coming in right now. They can't get them because they haven't been appropriated. They can only get the 195K.
So.
So if you say one fourth, let me finish my argument. What does that mean? Because they didn't, they could have applied three months ago for money.
That was my question, that would be my question.
And so it's just that they have the ability to request the funds on a quarterly basis. And Liz, did I explain that well enough, or?
That's consistent, yes, that's consistent with my understanding. It must be appropriated before it can be conveyed.
Right, so my simple question would be that when we appropriated in the town meeting, they then could have requested to have
Immediately.
Immediately, an immediate.
Yes, they could have.
Okay, so that makes sense.
We undertook it at that point, though, instead of making any quarterly requests immediately. We were still working with Liz and her team to make sure all of our state, federal.
Everything was taken care of.
Everything, every team was crossed, every eye was guarded.
Right.
Before any money, any attempt to transfer money occurred to make sure everything was clear, transparent, above board and accounted for.
And that I appreciate as well.
Right, and to that point, to Madam Chair, we were confused just as much as you were on how these funds got drawn down.
So this is covering FY21 activity?
Yes, it's the funds that they're receiving are FY21 funds that were appropriated at the FY21
Okay, so.
Annual town meeting.
You'd like the Board to have a motion to
Show me the money.
To authorize a payment to TCAM for 195,462 dot 10.
Is it 62 or 22?
62. It's in, it should be.
It's in the, it is, I brought that. Well, I haven't seen it in this paper.
I apologize for that.
Could you give me a copy of that, and I will have, pending your motion, pending your vote, I will have that payment made. But can you give me a copy of what you've got with the number on it? That'd be good.
I think.
You can give it to me.
Hold on.
We need a payment, we need a request that's formal, not my handwritten number. Do you have that?
Liz, do we have that in part of the package?
Dave, that's in the package. We just got to fill in the number, correct?
I didn't get that.
Steve, you're dropping up really bad. Liz, could you clarify what Steve just said?
Yes, can I, so in the package was a pro forma request under Section 8 for quarterly funding, but it doesn't, as you say, include the number. I could suggest that if the Board is inclined to take the vote and approve the 195,462 10 tonight, you could make that vote contingent on receipt of a renewed request from us with the dollar amount included, and we could get that to you first thing in the morning.
That makes sense. Okay.
Right, yeah, we're not looking for you to cover that right now. We'll first send tomorrow morning. We're getting the process rolling for the first time, so whatever we need to work out to make this happen correctly is fine with us.
So I'm happy with that motion.
Okay, and, okay, let's do that, and I'll make a copy of this.
As soon as I get some, well, I have that, but I don't have any with a dollar on it.
I just wrote it, hand wrote it.
No, well, I'd like something, if we get something from TCAM, then we can attach it to the payment.
Okay.
We can submit that tomorrow morning.
All right, I'm good with that.
All right, so is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve for quarterly funding for Townsend Community Access Media the sum of 195,462 dollars and 10 cents that was appropriated at the last town meeting, contingent upon a written confirmation from their attorney.
Sure.
Just a question, it's really an annual payment because we're paying the whole lump sum.
It is.
So would it be better if the motion read as to authorize the annual payment of that amount?
So amend quarterly to annual? Am I okay with that?
Because you're not going to get that four times.
No, 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 no. Wouldn't that be wonderful? Yeah, but in the future, we'd go back to quarterly.
Yeah, in the future, there'll be a new vote, and I want to talk about the future after they close this one.
Well, okay, can I add to that? I agree that this, that the quarterly request is for the entire annual amount. And I know that sounds picky, but it's because we're not changing the words for the quarterly. And the agreement doesn't allow for an annual payment.
And that's why I wanted to do quarterly because if they did, my, my I appreciate the fact that they took the time from September 2020 until now to be able to figure out what they needed to do with their financials before they approached us with a payment. I just want to make sure, number one, it's clear that it's a quarterly payment, so it's not going to be the full amount. So we are paying a quarterly payment with a request for the annual amount.
Correct.
Yeah.
And who said correct?
I did.
It is a quarterly payment consisting of the annual amount. Maybe we need to say so no further quarterly requests will be entertained. Maybe that's what we need to say.
Under the, under the way it's worked out currently, we're always asking for money from last year, as it were. Whereas if we were caught up, if everything was right in sync with each other, you'd get a quarter's worth in from Comcast, 30 days, within 30 days, we would then request for that.
That will never happen.
Right, I know, but in theory, that's what I think what the documents were trying to lay out. That as it came in from Comcast, it could then go out on a quarterly basis.
I think there's a different legal organization structure that would permit that to happen, but apparently that's not the way this is set up, so we won't go there.
That is exactly right. Had it been, had the account that the town is holding these funds in been set up in a different manner, this would have worked. This, I think, was cribbed from somewhere.
So looking ahead for this annual town meeting, maybe TCAM and their attorney, is it Liz, wants to come up with some wording to change that so we can pay you as the money comes in. And we could do that as part of the annual.
Or at least clarify the fact that, like, the last appropriation for the entire amount, we can take out lump sum when we request it rather than right now, if we're reading this, there's 195K that was appropriated, but we can only take a quarter of it. By the time we get to the next town meeting, there's going to be another amount similar to that. And now you've got all that money sitting here that we can only pull out 40,000.
So how are you operating without getting the money ahead of time?
No, no, right, as long as we're not getting.
No, how are you?
He's asking how we're operating right now.
Oh, we've got left over from the original initiation back in 20.
2020, July 2020.
Where funds were dropped lump sum to the June of almost half a million dollars to start up TCAM. There was an aborted start until January of this year, and we've been living off of that money from almost two years ago now.
Were we clear on your motion so you can close out the 195,462 10?
So what is the motion? How are we wording it finally? Sorry.
The motion. I move that we approve a quarterly.
What is the quarterly request?
Quarterly request for funding for Townsend Community Access Media in the amount of 195,462 dollars and 10 cents for an annual amount that was appropriated at town meeting, contingent on a written confirmation from TCAM's attorney.
Now, second.
All right, so any further discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor?
Oh, Shank, yes.
Catholic and Iranian, yes.
Brian, to Cal, yes.
Okay, a question. So there must be more money than the 195,462 in the town?
Yes.
Do you want to put in on the special town meeting appropriation to release that amount in December?
I think we can hold off until the annual because that's when.
Okay, I'm getting it.
Well, I wanted to know. There, we have had two payments come in. We probably don't want to do this at the special town meeting. I think we should wait for the annual. The time where it might be possible to do it in the special town meeting the next year is when we have a fully staffed finance department.
Yeah.
Is what I'm saying. That's all.
Okay.
I think we want to wait right now.
I retract that question.
It's a good idea. It is a good idea.
Well, the intent, when the contract was done with Comcast, the intent was for TCAM to get quarterly payments.
And.
And I don't know how to go about doing that, but that was the intent.
It's the
It's the money amount, right?
Section 53 and 2/3 and 9/10. We set up one of those accounts instead of one of the kind of accounts of the other kind of accounts. And so it's, and that had to be approved at town meeting. I have no idea how you unapprove, maybe. Liz, do you know anything about this? It's the type of PEG access account that we have, the base, the, what the money gets set into is set up a certain way. And there are rules that go with that certain way that, I mean, I'm talking really way personally.
We can work on that.
But I've read it.
Yeah, exactly. That would be good.
And it is, I thought, and these, this agreement is written to allow just that to happen.
Right.
But it's not possible.
It's too bad.
Yeah, yeah, really.
Because that wasn't the intent of the Cable Committee. I can tell you that.
The basic, the basic thing to keep in the back of everybody's mind is we can never ask for money that doesn't exist because it hasn't been appropriated out of the receipts account, moved into the TCAM
Whatever.
operating expense account, just like the ambulance, you know, at the end of the year, they transfer money out of the ambulance account, receipts account into whatever operating funds need to happen, similar to that, I guess.
Well, I have faith that you guys can get it straightened out within a couple of years, I'm sure, that we can get back on somewhat of a, so your operating schedule.
I have some ideas for.
It's different ways to organize it, and I think working with your attorney, we can come up with the language for the next town meeting to make this more automatic in the future.
Sounds perfect to me.
Yeah.
Okay, so the next, so we're done with number one, the request for quarterly funding. I'm looking at the, for the Board of Selectmen's approval list, and there were four things, and number one is taken care of. Number two, articles of amendment. So looking at this, Article 2, Article 3, I'm trying to figure out. Article 2 was members on the old bylaws. Are we looking at bylaws here or are we looking at articles of amendment?
Which number two?
Two, articles of amendment.
Of amendment.
So what are we amending here?
So we're requesting amendment to the two founding documents that were in place as of April, the founding of the organization. So they were in place when you signed the grant agreement, September 15th, 2020, as a result of the incorporation. The Articles of Amendment, nothing about these proposals will change the mission of the organization, nothing will change the terms of the grant agreement, and to the point made earlier about the access to the community, nothing will change the grant definition of access and which defines the right and ability of any Townsend resident or any person affiliated with Townsend to use a designated PEG facilities and equipment and so on. These are technical legal proposals in order to meet IRS and Attorney General expectations for 501(c)(3) public charity nonprofits. The amendments to the, and in part, they are driven by a need to integrate the grant agreement requirements with the founding documents. So for example, a key change that we're requesting your approval for amendment of the Articles created the corporation has to do with the dissolution clause. The generic dissolution clause in a Massachusetts nonprofit corporation states any funds remaining at dissolution of the corporation must go to another 501(c)(3) organization. Your grant agreement requires funds on dissolution back to the town.
Anyone not speaking, could they mute their phones?
Steve, can you mute your phone?
Tyler?
Can you, Steve?
Can you, where's the dog? Can you put the dog back in her bed and help Brady?
Steve, could you mute?
I have to go on a call. Can you put her in the bed and help Brady? Hey, Steve?
Hey, Steve, can you mute yourself? I don't think he's buying the phone.
Very, very.
Okay.
I got it out of the car.
Both kids, huh? Kids and dogs. So my point is that this is a good example of a situation in which an amendment is necessary because under the grant agreement on dissolution, funds from TCAM and assets come back to the town. And so in order to integrate the documents and protect your rights under the grant agreement, we're proposing amendment to the dissolution section in the Articles of Organization to reflect that commitment. There are other aspects of the amendments that are necessary for 501(c)(3) approval. For example, as originally filed, the Articles of Organization did not include IRS required language about limitations on lobbying activity and a bar to any political campaign activity, which is applicable to 501(c)(3) organizations. So before we can file the application with the IRS, we need to line the state documents up to tick the boxes for IRS requirements. The bylaws, similarly, there were a number of standard elements that were missing from a standard nonprofit set of bylaws. Many of those were procedural. For example, the bylaws provide for a board and the number of board members and so on, but didn't have the provision about how a director might resign, waiver of notice, remote participation ability, electronic transmission ability. There are a number of just basic nonprofit corporate aspects of bylaws that were missing, along with some best practice elements that flow from regulatory expectations, the Division of Public Charities' expectations of the IRS. So taken together, our view is that these amendments will line TCAM up to smoothly move through the IRS approval process for recognition as a 501(c)(3), and the documents as amended will meet the state expectations for nonprofit charitable corporations.
Okay, so.
I apologize for interrupting. Let me just say one other thing. The town's, the town's right to amend is contained in the original bylaws in the amendment section, which says, you know, there's a process there to go through, and so we're here before you under those bylaws.
Under that process, that's what we're doing.
Right.
Madam Chair, may I ask a question?
You can ask a question, sure.
So Liz, what we're looking at here is to allow TCAM to amend the Articles of amendment that's associated with the grant agreement to submit to IRS and to the AG.
Yes, the Articles of Amendment have been approved by TCAM because procedurally under the bylaws, that's the first thing to do. So the Board has met and they've approved the changes to the Articles in this, these Articles of Amendment plus changes to the bylaws. And then we come to you and we ask for your assent to that. And then once we've received that assent, we will file the Articles of Amendment with the Corporations Division, and they will update the corporate documents so that we can then file them with the IRS. The updated bylaws will go to the Division with a copy to the IRS.
So the Articles of Amendment are to the original Articles of Organization.
That's correct.
501(c)(3), okay. So I have a question, ma'am. On the amendment, what, what are you changing in there besides what you just talked about? In other words, it, what changes as far as the town goes in any of this?
So, I'd be happy to run down a list with you of the key changes. We could also send you a redlined version. The key changes to the Articles, and I just want to reiterate, this doesn't change the mission of the organization and it doesn't change the, the grant agreement. What it does is read into the document some of the grant terms which are required so that we're all aware of them. It's embedded in the corporate paperwork. And also made some changes for either C3 applicability or in conformity with best practice expectations. So in article, so I can go through these if you'd like, I can go down them in a punch list. Would that help?
Yes, for me, of all. You don't want to do it?
I just think it expands the, the original agreement and it puts, it puts forth on things that should have been in there in the first place.
I, I agree with that. I mean, there were a lot, I was told that I couldn't even look at the bylaws or the Articles of Organization because they had already flown in the coop when we were making the grant agreement.
Madam Chair?
And so this fixes that. But what, my specific questions, I don't need to go over the dissolution clause or the, there, I thought there was a mismatch in the annual reporting, you know, that fiscal year. There was a mismatch in that. There were a lot of things that were off. Does it change any of the things that the town was able to do that now they aren't able to do with respect to the corporation?
It doesn't change, so there are two aspects. It doesn't change the underlying agreement terms at all. It doesn't amend the agreement. It, it, what it does is borrow agreement commitments and embed them in the corporate documents. There are two areas that are, that I'll mention to you that are a little bit different. One does change the bylaws in the amendment clause, which previously had this process where TCAM came to the board. And now in the current iteration of the bylaws, rather than come to you for approval to amend the bylaws, we inserted a section that says, "Conformance with grant agreement with the Town of Townsend. The corporation shall operate in conformance with the grant agreement entered into by and between the Town of Townsend and the corporation on September fifteenth, twenty twenty, and any amendment or renewal thereof." So in that way, we read in the, the obligations of the town, but we simplified the amendment section in the new bylaws such that they can be altered, amended, or repealed in whole or in part by a vote of the majority of the directors and in office. And I'll tell you the rationale behind that. There are points at which obviously there needs to be town approval under the agreement and the operation of TCAM must be, must be absolutely consistent with the agreement, as it might be amended or renewed going forward. However, the board, in our view, the board needs flexibility to make changes which are more administrative to the by, to the board or to change the annual meeting date, for example, or to comprise a standing committee or to add an officer. You know, there are certain corporate procedures that, in our view, the board will typically have authority to make and which will create additional need to come before you for the corporate procedures. And so we harmonize that by streamlining the board's ability to make changes that are going to help them with internal functioning and at the same time, under the bylaws, make it very explicit that all of this is governed by the agreement.
Madam Chair?
Thank you. Yeah. Joe, did you have a question?
Sure, I do. I, I guess we could go on this thing for probably four hours. I want to make a point here that, you know, what TCAM has done in the past maybe six months, seven months, Dave, Lisa, and Steve, and them getting Liz on board and all the rest of them. They are more transparent now than that TCAM board ever has been. I feel we need to put the trust and faith in this board and this committee to make the right decision. We can sit here and dissect this thing all day long. I am not an attorney. I don't have the time and the knowledge to know the ifs, ands, or buts. I think us as a board have to put the trust and faith in this attorney that this is being done correctly. And I think with Dave, Lisa, and Steve on, I think we, we can just nickel dime this thing forever. I mean, we have more transparency now than we've ever had. And I think we just need to make it simple and move forward. That's all I have.
Right. So are we ready for a motion?
I can make a motion, but that, I just want to make sure that I'm making the right motion.
There's, there's two of them. I think you need to move to accept the Articles of Amendment.
I'd like to move, to move to allow TCAM to amend the Articles of Amendment associated with the Articles of Corporation and with the grant agreement to submit to the IRS and to the Attorney General.
I'll second.
I'm confused. Tell me what you're doing. I, I, I think my suggest, first suggested motion would be to move to accept the Articles of Amendment to the Articles of Organization. My second one would be to move to accept the restated bylaws. And then my third one would be to look at the, the, we haven't looked yet at the addendum to the grant agreement. So I wouldn't accept that one yet. But I would, I would have two motions. One to accept the Articles of Amendment to the Articles of Organization.
So moved.
All right. Liz?
Can I, can I just? I'm sorry, can I make a suggestion? The current bylaws ask the board to approve the amended, the Articles of Amendment and the amended bylaws. And so if I may ask, Madam Chairperson, I think the wording would be to approve rather than to accept.
Okay, all right. So.
I can.
So amended?
I, I move to amend.
All right. So we will approve the Articles of Amendment and the restated bylaws. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Oh, Shank, yes.
Catholic and Iranian, yes.
Veronica Cal, yes. Okay, number four, and this is just a deadline change, correct?
Correct.
In the grant agreement?
That's right.
For the establishment of the, you know, for applying for 501(c)(3) status?
That's correct.
It's merely a change in section six of the original bylaw. They were supposed to have applied for 501(c)(3) status by September a year ago, I believe. Yeah. Right. And so this just changes that.
So we're moving to approve the addendum to the grant agreement between the Town of Townsend and Townsend Community Access Media Inc.
Correct.
To extend the filing deadline. Form ten twenty-four, okay.
Yeah.
Madam Chair, if you're ready, I'll move.
Uh, I'm ready.
Okay. I move to approve the addendum to grant agreement between the Town of Townsend and Townsend Community Access Media Inc., dated September fifteenth, twenty twenty, to extend the filing deadline for form ten twenty-three with the IRS honor before December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one.
Is there a second?
Second, yeah.
Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Oh, Shank, yes.
Catholic and Iranian, yes.
Veronica Cal, yes. All right, I, I think that's pretty much it.
Madam Chair?
Yeah.
So again, I just want to apologize for the chaos having my middle one brokers on with football and I appreciate you having the patience to me unmuted. But I just, I, I do apologize for not being there tonight, but I do want to thank, you know, our attorney for all the efforts her and her team has put together over the past year, or almost a year, to get us where we are today. And as I stated at the beginning of the meeting, you know, I do want to publicly thank, you know, Lisa for all her efforts in coordinating and scheduling the Zoom meetings to keep the town, you know, the, the town boards and committees being able to meet during COVID. And really, you know, Dave in his new role as Executive Director being the, really the forefront and doing the, you know, having the boots on the ground of getting everything that we need as far as the owl, which is in front of you and I, and all our computer things going. If it wasn't for those two, we wouldn't be where we are today. So I wanted to thank them and the board for having the faith in us. My role has been strictly be, behind the scenes, working with our attorneys and our accountants, which is that packet that you have in front of us. But I just wanted to thank everybody for all their efforts and the faith in, in the board. And we really look forward to the future of TCAM and what we'll be able to bring to the town as we get the studio up and running with hopefully in the next few months and really get, really get this thing, you know, kicked off. It's been a, a tough year, a long year. But we feel we have everything in place now with the support of the board to really move forward. So I just wanted to thank everybody on the call for, for everything they've done for us.
While we're on a love fest, thank you, Steve, for all of your efforts. All right. Was, was there anything else that you needed from us?
No, thank you very much.
Thank you, Liz.
Thank you, Liz.
Thanks, everybody.
Good job.
All right, moving on. Let's get all this paper put away. Actually, I haven't buried anything. Okay, so that was two point one. What I'd like to do right now is move up four point. I have it.
Four point two.
Four point two, the voting precincts. And what was the other one?
And since Kathy's here, I think it's four point seven, where surplus booths.
Yeah.
Oh, I forgot all about that.
So then you don't have that. Then you don't have to stay here.
Oh, okay.
Late, late after a long day already.
I'm concerned about that, I guess. The precincting has a deadline to it, so.
Yeah, so let's move to four point two, review and approve the voting precincts as proposed by the town clerk. So Kathy, do you want to speak on this?
Okay, so every ten years after the federal US Census, like, the election divisions goes through a re-precincting to try to keep all the precincts equal in size as residents, not the voters, but as the number of residents in each precinct. And to allow for growth in the precincts, each precinct cannot be larger than four thousand residents. Right now, we don't have that issue according to the US Census, we have nine thousand one hundred and twenty-seven residents. So we're not even close to having to break off into another precinct. So they sent us the maps and what I did, and I can give you each one of these two pages. There's only two little sections on the map that will be changed, from what I can tell. One is off of Emery Road. Part of it was precinct one, part was precinct three, and I believe now it's all going to be precinct three. And on Greenville Road, there was one small section that was precinct one will, in that section I highlighted and, and red, will now be precinct two. Does that make sense? So it's, it will have minimal impact. Once this has been approved by you, we will send it into the state. They will do the final on it and send us all the addresses that will be changed and we'll have to notify those voters of the changes. So they'll know which precinct to vote in. We're lucky we all vote at the same place, so if they get the wrong precinct, it's not a huge deal. Right. So I did type up a letter to the local elections division for you to sign. And then once that's signed, we can send it in. And it's supposed to be done by October twenty-ninth, I believe it is.
Well, we'll have it done tonight.
Yeah, so that's, that would be wonderful.
Um, so is there a motion to accept the revised voting precincts as proposed by the town clerk?
I move that we approve the revised voting precincts as proposed by the town clerk.
And is there a second?
Second.
So any discussion?
I want to add, though I believe these proposed changes are by the state. They're being brought forward by the town clerk.
Yes.
So the town clerk is not to be blamed or credited how you look at it, for changing like precincts. These were essentially dictated to us by the state based upon the census. Kathy's just following through with the process to make it petition.
And it looks to me, you're looking at the maps, like, that makes sense.
It makes its own sense, yeah.
I am. It's almost like, why were, were they in a different district?
Well, that's how we felt way back in two thousand and twelve when we approved tho, those maps were approved. It's like, this doesn't make sense. And we questioned them, and we're like, no, this is the way we have it. And we're like, okay.
So, all right. So do we need to amend the motion instead of the proposed by?
I think it's fine, but I just want to be clear where this is originated from.
Okay.
Making sure Kathy doesn't get blamed.
Fair enough. All right, so all those in favor?
Thank you, yes.
Catholic and Iranian, yes.
Veronica, oh, yes. So thank you, Kathy. Should we sign right now?
Yes. When will Joe be back?
Tomorrow. I can come in tomorrow night and sign it.
Oh, okay.
Is that too late, Kathy?
No, no, that's fine. That's not a issue at all.
Have a table?
I'm just curious. So if some of us have been changed, will we get notification?
Yeah, yeah, once the state, we don't have. Our next election isn't until April. Do you want to leave it in your office for Joe to sign?
Oh, let's put it, we'll put it on the, let's put it on the cabinet where we sign everything. Or put it with this.
Leave it with me over there.
Yeah.
I just want to leave it someplace safe.
I know, I know.
Don't give it to me. It could get messed up in the papers.
I grabbed it.
Good.
Yeah, so at least the people will get notified once we get the finals from the state. But we don't have an election for people.
Right, yeah. I was just curious because I haven't been a part of it.
You stay with me.
Okay, that's what I was curious about.
Absolutely. I think everyone in the room stays the same, so that's.
All right.
All right, so moving on to fourth dash seven, the the
Surplus?
Surplus, yes. Thank you. We were going to declare, and so this is declare surplus unused voting booths signs and other small items related to elections with a value to be determined by the town clerk and the chief procurement officer, who is Ross. Is there a motion?
I don't have, I don't think there's much of anything as far as value goes. It's the old voting booths that we have, the metal voting booths.
Oh, yeah.
Those are very, I mean, they've been around forever as far as, as far as I know.
They're a little rickety.
Exactly. And we have some new ones that were paid for by a grant and by presidential election money that comes to us to use for such a purpose.
Okay.
All right.
Want to make motion?
All right.
I move that we declare surplus unused voting booths signs and other small items related to the elections with a value to be determined by the town clerk and the chief procurement officer. A move that we declare surplus unused voting booths, signs and other small items related to the elections with a value to be determined by the town clerk and the chief procurement officer.
Um, is there a second?
That's fine.
We think the total value might be $50 if you could find somebody who would want them.
Right, maybe scrap metal or something. Yeah, as opposed to.
I mean, I can offer them to other clerks to see if anyone is interested in them. Some of the old, um, the smaller towns are looking for things.
They're not a lot smaller than us, are they?
Oh, yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
Until I'm not native. All right, all those in favor?
Oh, Shank, yes.
Chastis and Duranian, yes.
Veronica Kell, yes. So you're unanimous? And should we, while we're on a roll with surplus, should we just go to 4.8?
Nothing else for you right?
Well, thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
Well, we appreciate your effort here.
Yeah, so thank you Kathy.
We get this off and for enough. Have a good evening, everyone.
Bye. All right, the next one is uh, surplus unused furniture with a value to be determined by the police chief and the chief procurement officer. It looks like there's a table here. Um, and some chairs, like a conference table and some chairs.
A move that we. Uh, allow to declare surplus unused furniture with a value to be determined by the police chief and the chief procurement officer.
Is there a second?
Second that.
Um, any further comments?
Nope.
All right, hearing none. Um, others in favor?
Joe Shank, yes.
Chastis and Duranian, yes.
Veronica Kell, yes.
So I will ask Ross, like, to all departments, pictures of these tables and chairs. If they don't get any takers, there's a group in Devon's that actually repurposes office apartments.
Oh, good.
And they might take it. You know, if they get them, just take it for transportation and avoid us having to take it out there.
Right, right. All right. Uh, okay, heading back up to 3.1, um, appointing members to the town administrator's search committee. So in the sharepoint, there is uh, all the volunteer forms that we receive. Um, were placed in there, let me get them. Uh, so in the TA search committee, uh, we have one, two, three, four, five, we've, um, six applicants. Um, the search committee was, is to be made up of um, one selectman, one member of the finance committee. Uh, one um, department head, one town employee. Uh, who is not a department head, and one um. Member from the community at large. So uh, we have six names here. No one from the selectman has put in, so I think we should start there. Um, and with that, I, I don't, I mean, none of the three of us have put in, but I, I would, um. How do you guys want to do this? Should I just make a nomination? Chaz is looking a little deer-nosed, I'd say. Um, if, if I would nominate, if he is willing to serve, Chaz, because you will be on the board the longest. Of all of us, I'm not counting on you quitting or resigning. So you will be on the board the longest. That said, maybe it should be. Um, because we will all, the three of us will be the ones interviewing and making the decision. So that said, maybe for the search committee, we should have Joe. Cause he's on the board the shortest of the, of the three of us. But in any event, I think it should have solved me. From being nominated.
I see what you did there.
So Chaz, so what do you guys think?
Well. I think she made a good point. I, I mean, it's up to you guys how you want to do it. You'll be there the longest. You'll work with whoever we bring in the longest. I, I'll be happy to do whatever you guys would like. If you want, if you don't want to do it, Chaz, I'd be happy to do it, but I think, you know. You have a lot of great knowledge background that might be pertinent to the search, but you decide.
Or we could not appoint the selectmen tonight, and you could think about it. Um, but I, I just think that it is the search committee and we haven't yet talked about what the search committee is going to do.
Right.
So, but I wanted, because we had no selectman voluntary response form, I just wanted to bring that up first.
Well, if, if I am nominated, I don't have a precedent either. So we'll leave it at that.
Did you just get not?
All right, then I'm.
I can't hear you, Joe, you're breaking up.
I, I, then I'm going to nominate Chaz as the select board um, member of the search committee.
And I'll second that.
All right, so um. Any, any further comments on this? All right, then, all those in favor?
Oh, Shank, yes.
Veronica Kell, yes.
Chastis and Duranian, yes.
All right, so Chaz, welcome to the search committee. Um, so Ross, you have um, experience with search committees. I have never set up a search committee. This is, other than for what we did for the entrance and that sort of thing, but for a permanent position now. So um, any words of wisdom for us?
I think the board should sort of set parameters on what you want. Starting with three to five candidates. I assume that's the number you think you want, but. Will you accept candidates that have not been a town administrator? Or will you accept only someone who's been an active town administrator? And you can sort of define those terms, but. That's a, a sort of key search criteria as to whether. Someone must be or have been a town administrator before. Uh, I don't believe the charter requires a residency requirement.
No, it doesn't.
I generally suggest not doing that because it limits your talent pool. Not that there aren't talented people in Townsend. I wouldn't necessarily do that unless you feel that's important. Do you want the committee to just give you the three to five names? Or do you want them to rank them as the, as the ways that they see it? So you got a priority list? Do you want the search committee to do reference checks, background checks, everything except for a query, you do that at the end? Or do you want to solely do the reference checks yourself? It doesn't mean that if, if they do some, you can't do, do them again, your own reference checks, but. That's a guideline that you could pass on to the committee.
Okay, so should we set those criteria tonight then, Ross? And write them up?
I think so, um.
Did, now, with the charter changes. It, was there criteria involved in the, the charter changes that we voted in?
Not that I. No, this, no.
There says very little about what the selection committee actually wrote.
Yeah, we looked at that. It doesn't even tell you how it should be made up, just that there should be one.
Okay, so, I mean, having said that. My thought is if we can establish what the committee is and then. When we have a, a working, the next working session, if we can just. Together what we feel is, is necessary for that.
So that would be on Monday?
Right.
Cause our working session. All right, so we'll put that on as an agenda item.
So that the first, the, yeah, once, once we have a selection committee. Then we would have the criteria involved in, in, in what they're looking at.
And you may want to get down to what. Skills you're looking for, what characteristics you want. You want somebody strong in finance, someone strong in HR, someone strong in project management. It's reasonable to say yes to all three of those, but. You need to think that, that through.
Or, or maybe prioritize those three things. Yeah. Okay. Um. All right, how about proceeding with the names that we have? Um, to, to nominate?
So we have, can you give those to me again? We have a selectman, we have finance committee.
Um, we, selectman, which we have now appointed, a FinCom, which we have not received a candidate.
Okay.
Um, for, um, department head, and the way I see this, we have two that can be considered department heads. Town employees. I see only one. And for um, residents at large, I see three.
Well, I would like to make a. The one resident, I would, do, we say the names?
Yeah, I think so. If you want to make a nomination, Joe, for the resident, go ahead.
I would like to make a nomination for Dave Chanel to be the resident.
I second that.
Um, all right, any further discussion?
Nope.
All right then, um. All those in favor, roll call vote, please.
Thank you, yes.
Chastis and Duranian, yes.
Veronica Kell, yes. So Dave Chanel will be our.
Resident.
Resident. Um, all right, the, the next one to look at would be um, uh, department heads, both also named Dave.
Okay. Well. How many are we picking? Five?
There will be a total of five, but we don't have a, we don't have a FinCom candidate, so we need to decide whether we want to. Choose another person from here. What do you think, Ross, if we don't have a? Um, do we want to just seat someone who came forward to volunteer and have? Two residents or two department heads?
Yeah, or you could hold off on that last appointment till, and we, till you poke the finance base more.
Okay.
But I would. I mean, I think FinCom had, should have a big stake in this decision.
I know, I don't disagree.
They, you might allow them to appoint a representative, it doesn't have to be one of their own members, could be someone that they want to support. Bush, that, that's up to you. And they'd have to meet to. Do that, I think.
I, I, my opinion on that, you want my opinion on that? I, I would rather it was one of them, because otherwise it expands the pool to residents at large. It, you know, that's how I feel. Uh, I think it should be a member of the committee.
Who are the two Dave that we have?
Uh. Um. We have Dave Funnyoli. Who I consider a department head from TCAM, and um, since he's the executive director, and Dave Fajant, who is latter department.
I would, well. Want me to make another motion?
Go for it, Joe.
I, I would like to see maybe Dave Funnyoli, who was a prior select person. So he'll have a little bit of background, a little bit of knowledge as to what really you'd be looking at in regards to replacing the person.
I will second.
Was that a motion?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, well, yeah, I'll make a motion that Dave Funnyoli be on as the department head.
And I will second that. Um, all those in favor, any further discussion? All right then, all those in favor?
Oh, Shank, yes.
Chastis and Duranian, yes.
Veronica Kell, yes. Um. All right, so that leaves us with one employee. We have one and only one. On the list.
I make a motion that we um. Accept Andrew Funk as a town employee for the um, TA search committee.
Second that.
All right. Any further discussion? All right, um, all those in favor? Roll call vote, Joe, starting with you.
Oh, Shank, yes.
Chastis and Duranian, yes.
Veronica Kell, yes. So we have a committee minus minus a FinCom member.
Um. I would like to say that I'm very, the, the, the other candidates are very, very strong, um, and if they. If for any reason, any of the ones that we had chosen drop out, that we approach. The, the three remaining first before we put it out to another volunteer, if that's okay.
I'm, I'm good with that. I think that's reasonable. Um, I also think we should uh. Contact the um, FinCom and ask them to uh, discuss them, uh, for one of them to come forward.
Yeah.
Um, to uh. Um, and if they don't come forward by Monday, that we go back and choose one of the three.
Okay.
That is, that's in the pool. We'll just go with two at large. The, the reason, I like to have a person that's on the committee, on the FinCom, because they will be working directly with the TA. And that's why we prefer it to be a FinCom member. But if there isn't anybody that's able to come forward, I understand that, certainly. And um, and I would, we have three other ones.
Right, and of, of the three, I know two.
Hand up. Um, go ahead.
I'm going to be. Going to be very particular about who we put on the FinCom, just so.
Um, I see a hand up from Andrea Wood, who is the chair of the FinCom. So Andrea, do you, would you like to make a comment?
Yes, we, we did have a volunteer to do it, who um. Had a sheet pu- put up. I thought he had turned it in. I've been out of the loop for various reasons lately, and um. Um, you either have his response form, or I'm sure he will put it in soon. He may have been out of town, I don't know. Like I said, I've. Not been interacting with FinCom for a little more than a week.
Who is it, Andrea?
Um, uh, Don Hayes.
Okay, yeah. Is he, so he's willing to do it?
Yes.
Okay, I, I'll make.
Application.
Okay. Joe, was that a motion?
Make a motion. FinCom, yes. If that's what he wants to put the form to us.
Yep, okay, pending the form, okay, I'll second that.
All right, um, all those in favor?
Thank you, yes.
Chastis and Duranian, yes.
Veronica Kell, yes. So then, thank you very much.
Carolyn will send him a letter, tell him they've been appointed, notify town clerk, they should, each town clerk will be sworn in.
Okay.
And then. They should plan and organize a meeting, I assume. And so they can all select a chair and. Other thing, and by then you'll have given them some direction from your meeting on Monday.
Is, is it being too heavy-handed to have the board of selectmen name Chaz the chair as the committee?
No, I'd rather let everybody pick it.
Okay, all right. All right. I'm good with that. All right.
Boy, Chuck, surely not.
And on Monday, we will discuss our um, criteria for the search committee, for the search.
Yeah, thank you. It's two parts. It's describing the qualifications you want from TA and it's telling them how you want them to present that person to you.
Okay. All right, so, Joe and Chaz, think about that, and it'll be on the, on the deferred work session on Monday. All right. All right, so we have, we're moving on to 3.2 then. Two appointments. Is there a motion to appoint Sean Pearson as recycling attendant two contingent upon the passing of a query check and a pre-employment medical exam with a six-month probationary period?
I move that we appoint Sean Pearson as a recycling attendant two contingent upon the passing of a query check and a pre-employment medical exam with a six-month probationary period.
Is there a second?
It didn't come out, Joe.
Oh, second that, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Joe. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Joe Shank, yes.
Jess, six and Duranian, yes.
Veronica Kelly, yes.
The voice.
Welcome, Sean, congratulations.
All right.
I didn't hear that, Joe.
I said, the voice has got to carry for a hundred miles, it takes a while to get there.
All right, moving on to 3.3, is there a motion to appoint Matthew Mathos as the department assistant for the Conservation Commission, contingent upon the passing of a query check and pre-employment medical exam with a six-month probationary period?
I move that we appoint Matthew Mathos as the department assistant for the Conservation Commission, contingent upon the passing of a query check and the pre-employment medical exam with a six-month probationary period.
First second.
Oh.
All right, any further comments?
I'll just say that I was a part of the team that interviewed him, I was impressed with his background. He's, he's had a lot of environmental studies at school, he's done work on mill foil spread as part of a paper. He seems to have a lot of enthusiasm in the conservation area, I think he'd be a good fit.
Good.
I was part of the interview team too, and I concur with Ross. The references were excellent, so.
And we need to help over there in conservation, so I'm, I'm all for it.
All right, for votes, all those in favor?
Joe Shank, yes.
Jess, six and Duranian, yes.
Veronica Kelly, yes. So welcome, Matthew.
Yes, welcome. I guess I'll get a non-boarding grant.
Yeah, and well, he has to accept, right? You have to send him a, a letter.
Well, yes, and I have talked to him about the plan, pay scale, and he said that was acceptable, so so we pass his all background, which would be
All right. When will we have a start date for both of these? I guess they, they'll work that out with you, right, Ross?
Yeah.
All right, animal inspector, this is a new one. I would like a motion to nominate for animal inspector, Mary Laterno as the inspector of animals, and also John King. Can do these as two separate motions, or is one?
And who?
John King. Is it the forms?
When were these supposed to be done?
Well, there's a date at the top of the paper, 3/5/2021.
I move that we nominate John King and Mary Laterno as inspector of animals for the town of Thompson.
Is there a second?
In that?
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Joe Shank, yes.
Jess, six and Duranian, yes.
And Veronica Kelly, yes. So Ross, you'll get those sent over to
Yes. And the forms still say, but requires us to put in the changes on the right-hand side, so
Yeah.
The forms are correct as, as they were prepared.
Now, is there a term? That needs?
It's an annual appointment. So every year in March, you, you turn in your nominations. You're required, towns are required to nominate one or more inspectors of animals by April 1st of the spring, and then the term is through, I don't know if it's May or June. The state is the appointing third.
Right.
We nominate.
Right.
Then this goes to the Department of Agricultural Resources, and they determine whether or not the person is appointed.
And I'm just trying to get in my head, is why this is, this is March 5th, 2021, and we're just not doing this.
Correct.
That's unacceptable to me, this should have been brought up well before now. That's all, that's all I'm trying to say.
What we had.
Go ahead, Joe.
I said, just look what we had to deal with, so I, I understand your frustration, but I think right now, with Ross there, it's a great help to us. I mean, I, I gotta say, we really worked very hard for a lot of months, all three of us, you know, so we may have missed this one, but you know, that person was around, it should have been done back in March, with no doubt about it, but you know, we'll be on top of our game from now on.
All right. Moving on to 4.1, award the highway materials purchase contracts. So Ross, would you like to talk about this as the chief chairman of?
Sure. Jimmy Smith did an excellent job in preparing the bids and putting them out there. We had actually a very good turnout where most of the items, there was three vendors bidding on them. And we had some good ranges in prices, so I think the result came out very favorable for the town. This will be for the next, you know, upcoming year. And Jimmy's asking the board, and I'm concurring with his request, that for milling of existing road surfaces, PJ Albert bid $1.86 in place for washed sand for winter use, powder, stone and gravel. He bid $17.19 FOB and $23.44 delivered. For road reclamation, we awarded to Allstate Asphalt for $2.39 in place. And to buy the battonerous asphalt, it goes to PJ Keating at $68.98 a ton in place. Crack sealing to Superior Seal Coating for 29 cents in place. That's it.
So what we need then is a motion to award, is that the right term? Not sure.
Award highway materials as described.
So is there a motion?
I move that we award the highway materials as just described.
Second.
If there's something.
Second.
Thank you, Joe. All those in favor, or any further discussion, or are we good? All right, all those in favor?
Joe Shank, yes.
Jess, six and Duranian, yes.
Oh, yes, thank you, Jim and Ross. The next one is to, a motion to approve and sign out of session all 2022 renewals for class one, two, and three licenses contingent upon receipt of the required documentation and payment.
I move that we approve and sign out of session all 2022 renewals for class one, class two, and class three licenses contingent upon receipt of required documentation and payment.
A second that.
All right, any further discussion on this?
Chair, can I just ask a question?
Sure.
Ross, this will kind of go to you. Should I abstain from this, where my license is what's going to be signed? How would I do that?
Which class are you, Joe?
My class, to use town license.
You can abstain either from the whole vote, or you can abstain just from the vote for harbor harbor repair. Where does your other?
Proud of it. So I'll, I'll.
And then they can vote that one separately, if they want.
If you would.
If you're comfortable. It's probably good that you abstain from that, that vote.
Yeah. So, Chad, sorry about that.
That's all right. No, I amend the motion to approve and sign out of section all 2022 renewals for class one and class three licenses contingent upon receipt of required documentation and payment.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Joe Shank, yes.
Jess, six and Duranian, yes.
Veronica Kelly, yes.
And I move to approve and sign out of session all 2022 renewals for class two licenses contingent upon receipt of required documentation and payment.
I'll abstain.
Second. All right, all those in favor?
Joe Shank abstained.
Jess, six and Duranian, yes.
Veronica Kelly, yes. All right.
Thank you.
Moving on to 4.4, approve review, approve and sign a road opening permit for Bow Street as submitted by the highway superintendent. This is one that we saw before, but it had the funky dates. And Ross has since let us know that.
So it, it appeared to be out of sync because the requested work date or start date was actually before the select board dated that night. So it was put in sort of hold. As it turns out, I've, I've talked to Jimmy Smith, and the process is, the utility sends the request to the highway department, which is what you've seen. Jim collects $100 fee, the application is forwarded to the board for approval. If approved, it's returned back to the highway department, highway then verifies all the forms, fees, bonds are done, then schedules the work with utility. So regardless of the dates that are put on here, no work begins until it's been approved by the board and sent back and everything verified. And that was what we were hung up with before, is the dates seemed out of sync. They don't know what start date to put, so they just pick one that's a couple days out, but nothing happens until the board votes and until Jim verifies that everything is done. So I, I say this request now is in order, and then you're approved.
All right, is there a motion to sign the road opening permit for Bow Street?
I move that we approve a road opening permit for Bow Street as submitted by the highway superintendent.
Second.
All those in favor?
Joe Shank, yes.
Jess, six and Duranian, yes.
Veronica Kelly, yes. 4.5, review, approve and sign a license to sell Christmas trees from November 24th, 2021, which is the day before Thanksgiving to December 25th, 2021, and this is for the Lions Club at the back of the common.
I move that we approve and sign a license to sell Christmas trees from November 24th, 2021 to December 25th, 2021.
Second.
Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Joe Shank, yes.
Jess, six and Duranian, yes.
Veronica Kelly, yes.
I don't think they're going to make it to December 25th, but they usually sell out pretty quick over there.
Right. All right, so 4.6, we are passing over. This takes us then to 4.9, approve the emergency purchase of the network server. So Chaz, do we need a motion for that, given that we have something in there right now?
Well, it's not a network server.
Okay.
It's, it's an appliance as opposed to a server. What is, what I'm, I'm asking the board to approve is the appliance will mirror backup of town data to the cloud. And then in the event of one of the town servers going down, it will then be able to engage in a process server until we can get that other server back up and running. So it's really for backup and emergency server if we need it.
Is there a motion?
I move that we approve the emergency purchase of a backup appliance as submitted to the town administrator.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
I think this is a crucial part of our network that needs to be done now versus later.
Okay.
That's what I thought.
Funding sources, are we good on that, or we can discuss more on Monday at the work session?
We can do that. As we get ready to look at budgets for, for the special, we can look at, see where the IT budget is for this year.
Okay.
And then maybe adjust it and see.
Yeah, there needs to be some changes with the IT budget, because some has been put in facilities and some, you need to really look at that when we have a work session.
All right. So we have a, it's been moved and seconded to approve the emergency purchase of a backup appliance as submitted to the town administrator. All those in favor?
Joe Shank, yes.
Jess, six and Duranian, yes.
Veronica Kelly, yes. Great, so 5.1, town administrator report.
Great, and I'm, it's going to be short, because there is a Red Sox game starting shortly. On personnel, the board is set up by the charter to approve hires and terminations. What is not specifically addressed is when somebody's on their probation, and you just hired a couple people this evening for a six-month probation. So I'd like the board's okay for the town administrator, or before the town administrator, the interim town administrator, to meet with the department head and to decide the probation status of employees as the, as they approach the end of their probationary period. I think the department head and some guidance from the town administrator, we can determine whether the person has successfully completed their probation, should be hired, whether the person needs more time, should be given an extension, or whether the person is not working out and should not be hired. And I think it's more expedient if we do that at the department head and TA level versus the board, but I didn't want to take that leap without some discussion with the board and hopefully their approval.
So Chaz, do you have thoughts, or Joe? And then me.
I, I concur that it, it should. There, I, I do I do believe that there might need to be some conversation with selectmen as well, if it's for the if it's to extend a probation or if it's to the other on the negative, just so that we're all on the same page. I, I think that I'm okay with that.
So Joe, what do you think?
My opinion, I, I expressed, I mean, as Public Safety Liaison, I don't know if myself should be really making that decision if someone's going to stay on probation or not, especially if there is a problem. If I'm discussing that or having that and it comes in front of the Board and then we have to maybe terminate or not appoint them, I think that could look bad. So I think the Board member, not the Board, the the yeah, my. Town Administrator and the Department Head, be whichever it is, you know, they go forward. They discuss amongst themselves and if at that point Ross or whoever it is brings it to us is okay, well, this is the recommendation from the Department Head that, you know, he be terminated or another six months, then we move from there. But I think it's a smart thing to keep us as the Board out of that prior to a decision being made by the Department Head and the Administrator. It'll keep it a little bit cleaner and nicer across the board.
I, I think that as a selectman, I would want to know that this is happening, but we aren't involved with any sorts of reviews or anything like that. I do think that this would be, if we were doing this, it would be for now. I think this is something that we might want to spell out in the personnel policies and procedures eventually when we get to that, if we still agree with that, but it's a good idea to see how it goes.
So Department Head and Town Administrator can, can make the decision, but advise the Board that we're doing.
Yes, yeah.
And if the Board differed, then you could make that as a subject for a future meeting.
Right.
If you, if you concurred, then there's no further action.
Exactly.
Yes.
Are you okay with that, Joe?
It'll keep it cleaner for us, guys. It will, it really will.
Okay. I received a letter from a couple of members of the Fire Department indicating that those that were contemplating resigning by the end of the year, they, they've redrawn those resignation notices.
How many?
There were two.
Two, okay.
I've got copies of that letter here for you, if you want to see that. They've also indicated through this letter that they don't need to talk to the Board about the issues down at the Fire Department. And I think this improvement in the working environment down there is largely due to the realignment of duties and responsibilities initiated by Acting Chief Shepherd. So I take this as a big step forward that some of the members are now feeling that it's a good place to continue working.
Sounds good.
This is just a reminder that the special town meeting, the 14th, the warrant closes November 1st at four o'clock. But anybody that's got pending warrant articles, please send them to me as soon as possible. I will accept draft motions. These are placeholders to have them in by the first. The language can be perfected a few days later. But it will help me start to formulate the document if I get them as soon as possible.
Can I, can I ask a question?
Yes.
There are a lot of budgeting questions or budgeting things that need to happen. Is that a single article? So, or do you want those separately by department? You see what I'm saying?
I was going to incorporate those changes into the ominous budget that the town is seeing that they vote on.
Okay.
And I was going to show either no change or the ups and the increases and the decreases, so they would know what they're voting on is.
You might have talked to Department Heads. Do they know to submit to you? If they, if they say, I know that my budget needs an increase, should they submit that to you because of the differences in pay? There, there were a lot of differences in pay rates between what was voted in May at Special Town Meeting. And then after we did all the work with the contracts, et cetera, there were a lot of departments that had changes in those areas.
So I was going to use the spreadsheet that Jared pulled together showing the increases due to those wage changes. But I think to that point, I will send that to Department Heads and say, this is the budget, unless you tell me otherwise. So, yes, they should, if they've got budget changes, they need to let me know.
Tell them that because they will know. I, what Jared and I did, we did by class. We did not do by department. I do know which departments went up and down. And are we only doing the ones that need to be increased or are we decreased in those? That, in, in other words, some salaries were higher than what was budgeted. Other salaries were lower than what was budgeted. Are we doing only the pluses and leaving everything else there? Or are we taking away?
I would suggest we show it the way we think it is, which includes showing the negatives, the decreases. I mean, at the end, this impacts the tax rate. And if you can offset an increase with a decrease, I think that's a much better way to do this. I would not put in money that we don't think we need.
Okay, I, I have a pretty good idea of which those are. Okay.
But anyway, I will circulate that spreadsheet up until, well, the warrant article will have one article for the budget.
Okay.
We can fine tune that up to the point where we start sending it out for finance review and, and Town Council review.
Okay.
There's a lot to be done between now and then. So if people have warrant articles, especially zoning articles that require a lot of warrants, can you get them in there?
Would you like me to create a folder on SharePoint? That's just said Special Town Meeting and those documents in there.
Can all Department Heads submit to that?
I can make it. Yes, they can. Okay, I can do that and it sets, it sets it up for its own, they can send to the email address of Special Town Meeting. It creates its own email address. So when they send it, they send it to specialtownmeeting@townsandme.gov. Can you do that?
And I can start putting draft warrants in there as I.
Yeah.
Create it. I've contacted a member of the, well, I sent a note out to most of the members of the Finance Committee today asking for a meeting so we can start reviewing this budget. I think they're going to try to set up something for next Tuesday as a way to get together and for them to let me know how they want to see numbers and what numbers they want to see, so that we all be on the same page by the time we get there.
Sounds good.
Yeah. Is there a comment? Projects, the shared streets, IFBs, they have been submitted to the Central Register and Combys. The crosswalk and bike lane striping bids are due, the bids are due Monday, next Monday, the 25th. And the flashing beacons and the ADA crosswalks bids are due November 22nd. And yes, I updated them to show the project completion date of May 31st, 22 versus December 31st.
Thank you.
I spoke with Kevin Miller today. Remember, we met back on, I think, the 21st of September and drafted an MOU to allow him to put a driveway into, across town land into the back of his lot. He has reviewed the MOU and signed it. So if it's okay with you, it would be great if the Board would sign it tonight. But in all the conditions, the ones we mentioned at the 21st, I can read them again tonight if you want, but otherwise.
Okay.
It's pretty straightforward.
And Adam reviewed it? Yes.
No, I'm sorry, Adam did not review it, but I can ask him to review it pending, or you can sign it pending his signature or however you want to do that.
Do we, Madam Chair?
Yes.
I mean, I, I mean, I've read what the MOU is, exactly what we all discussed out there. I mean, do we really need Adam? I mean, we have no, we have no real say. The town voted to allow it and that's fine. We just narrowed this down so we know the scope of the work. We know the town is protected. I, I mean, by what I've read on this memorandum of understanding, it, it pretty much so, you know, it, he's willing to work with us. We as a town are getting a little bit of a benefit. He's fixing a hump on the back, making sure there's no water. I personally don't see any reason Town Council needs to get into it. I think we need to vote on this. And I'll sign it if that's the vote when I get in town tomorrow. It's only my opinion.
I would feel comfortable if we ran it by Town Council first. We can, contingent upon review of Town Council, but I would really like him to look at it.
I would too. He's looked at everything that we've done with that building. And, and I agree, Joe, that everything here is what we agreed to. I'm, I'm looking through the bike graph. I don't see it, but anyway. But.
Yeah, that's fine. Let's just move on and let, you know, we'll, we'll approve it with contingent that Town Council review it. If he's okay with it, we just all sign.
I'm okay with that.
So I move that we approve the memorandum of, memorandum of understanding with Mr. Kevin Miller in regards to the scope of work that we had discussed pending review from Town Council.
And sign out of session.
And sign out of session.
Second that.
All right, all those in favor?
Joe Shank, yes.
Jess, six and Duranian, yes.
Thank you. And just in case people at home haven't figured out, we've, at the suggestion of the Board of Health, we've revised the mask policy. So everybody in Town Hall in a meeting of more than, in a room with more than two people and more than one person has to wear a mask in Town Hall. And that goes for employees and visitors. So far, I see everybody is complying without a problem. As I said, the Red Sox are on shortly, so if not already, move on.
All right, is that it? Reports from Board Liaisons, General Government. Oh, all I have is the CPBG grant. The quarterly report has come out. I think I've sent it to you, Russ, correct? Or maybe Diane sent it directly to you. And I forwarded it to Housing. We're continuing to look for people who are interested in being part of the program. So I did send, I think it was just yesterday, to Carr and a little blur for both the housing assistance, the rehab assistance, and the fuel assistance for this heating season. I put that, hopefully it'll be in the Senior Center Newsletter. So because we are going forward with fuel assistance, right now the deadline is December 31st for everything. But we'll see if we've got another extension.
If, if I can add on to that as well, I had a discussion with the Chair of the Housing Affordable Trust, the Affordable Housing Trust. And we have frequent talks with Dave as the representative to TCM. And we're going to put together a question answer type video that can be aired on Channel Nine in regards to what your needs are for fuel assistance. And we'll talk about the entire process, which, which will outline exactly what somebody would need to do, if they need to get the fuel assistance funds that we have available, because we still have $26,000 that, you know, we need to expend and want to be able to, to have the process available for, for residents to understand what they need so that we can expedite it for them.
Okay. That. I, I guess, I was going to do under announcements for them. Okay, so that's all I have for Board Liaison. I missed the council on major.
Yeah, we, I, I had several that I had to reschedule. We had, I had to attend a water meeting, which was important. There's a lot of good work that they're doing over there and I just wanted to keep, keep apprised of it in regards to all of the moving parks that they have going on. But they're right on top of the, any needs that we have in the town. When I have something more specific, I'll report to the Board. The same thing with the I wanted to attend the Board of Health meeting that, that in regards to mask wearing as the Town Administrator has, has put forth. We're taking their lead in suggestions. I just want to thank them for their working this out as quickly as possible. And the Rec Department is working on increasing funding for the exercise complex that we've talked about over here too. So we're moving forward with that. The last thing would be, I, I, we did have a, I did have a scheduled meeting with the Library in, in regards to some of their proposals for IT. We had to reschedule it because it conflicted with another. And I'd like to, to probably put that up in an upcoming selectments. I want to say the, the second one in November if we can. Because they'll be proposing and then I'll be forward to you. And that's all I have for Liaison.
Remind me of that. All right, anything, Joe?
Yes, I was Public Safety. I want to iterate just a little bit that what Ross said. I've been paying a lot of attention to the Fire Department, going in and out a few times, just checking. And I think the morale in the department is really upbeat, you know? I think the leadership that's there right now. I, I think everybody needs leadership. They need somebody to guide them in the right direction. And I think Acting Chief Shepherd is actually doing a tremendous job. Far as the Police Department, I know I see there's a resignation of a police officer. I do believe we're going to be seeing another one very shortly, day or two. That's something I think we have to have a little discussion on a little bit further down the road once we get the other resignations, but we'll, we'll have that discussion when that happens. That's all I got.
All right. Moving on to five point three, announcements and communications. The two that are noted on the agenda, we, the Board of Selectmen would like to acknowledge the resignation of Tony Brennan from the Police Department and Thomas Stephanie from the Fire Department as of the end of December. We would also like to announce trick or treat for Halloween's coming up. So trick or treating will be on Sunday, October 31st, as it always is, Halloween from six to eight. We would like to see you know, outdoor trick or treating, small groups. I believe the Board of Health discouraged having gatherings indoors for Halloween, but outdoor trick or treating is home. So, that's it.
Well, I'd like to jump on something to that too. I just want to thank the Library Trustees, the VFW, anybody else who helped out with the funded trails. I had a blast. Nobody knew who I was. anybody else who helped out with the funded trails. I had a blast. Nobody knew who I was. I thought that was even better. The outpouring of residents was phenomenal. Our best guess was about 650 plus. There was a lot of money that was made, both for the VFW and for the library trustees. I personally had a great time, and I'm definitely gonna do it next year. The, the comments that I saw with other people, I gotten, I've gotten a lot of emails, a lot of comments in regards to, you know, it wasn't the, the best, you know, Walt Disney World kind of thing, but it was a lot of fun. Everybody had some fun. There was that I, I could see that the kids just had a blast. But I want to thank everybody involved. I want to thank Karen Clement for all her hard work in the gentleman's name that, that I can't think of his name right off the top of my head, but I want to, I want to thank everybody involved. The tour guides rock. We did, we did such a great job on getting everybody through in a timely manner. We're supposed to close at nine o'clock. We ended up closing much later than that. I think we didn't get out of there until after 10 o'clock at night. But thank you for everybody involved and, and I'm looking forward to it next year as well.
I have a blast. Go ahead, Joe.
I, I just, on these resignations that we have, must have letters from the Thomas and also from Tony Brennan. I would like to see that, you know, that something up with the town administrator, acting administrator. I would like to see an exiting interview with both these people. And when you see 20-plus year employee leaving, as far as the fire department one, I, 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 I'm just reading the letter, reading the letter for what it's worth. I mean, I'm good with that, but I would be very concerned as far as, you know, hoping that town administrator, acting town administrator will reach out to Tony. He is a great officer, has been in town a long time. I, I think we owe them the, the respect, them exiting interviews.
I've already sent a note to the chief asking for, to set up, you know, or have both those people contact me. And I'll let you know.
Thanks, guys. Alright. I, I guess the only other announcement I have is about a public hearing that the board of health is holding, and I'm announcing this only because it's at 9:30 in the morning on a Friday. And it only has a dial-in number. And I would like to, you know, I think it, and it's in room two, which I would like to have. I guess I would like it to be a little bit more public than that. So I guess this makes it, but so public hearing, the nature of the hearing is to consider the petition of Shepherd Farm seeking site assignment for poultry processing plant slaughterhouse at 3 Weaver Road in West Townsend. So if there's a soon, like, I'd like to see this on soon, but. Right now, that's not the case. There's no soon one.
Do we have? We have to take a formal, you know, acknowledgement that we've accepted resignation of the Tony Stepney, the fire department mechanic, and Tony Brennan from the police department, or we don't have to do nothing?
No, I, I just acknowledged the resignation, so.
Okay.
Alright, our next meeting is Monday morning, October 25th. It's a work session for ARPA funds in particular, that's the majority of it. So I'll be sending some things to you guys after tomorrow. And November 2nd at 6:00 PM is the next regular meeting. Dave, did you have a question?
I have a quick comment, if I would be permitted.
Go ahead.
It's the bottom of the first, and the Astros have hit a solo homerun. Red Sox are at that right now.
Okay, so we need to get out of there. Alright, is there a motion for adjournments?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to review and sign payroll and build payable warrants and out of session and for the week of October 25th.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Joe Shanks, yes.
Chad six and Duranian, yes.
Veronica Kell, yes.
Madam Chair, I move to adjourn at 8:19.
Second.
All those in favor?
Joe Shanks, yes.
Chad six and Duranian, yes.
Bye, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, good night.
Bye, good night.